네, 여러분들께 다시 한번 안내 말씀드리겠습니다.
May I have your attention please? From 1 o'clock, Fly Asia 2022 Special Session will soon begin here at the Blue Zone. Today, we will listen to those from the platforms connecting investors and startups, and we will be shared about startup ecosystems, past, present, and the future. So please be seated in the Blue Zone. And for the smooth running of this today's session, please turn your mobile phone to vibration mode. Thank you.
네, 여러분 반갑습니다.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Fly Asia 2022. I am today's anchor, Park Eung-gyeong. And this Fly Asia 2020 is being held under the banner of the innovative wave that the Asian startups create. And we have prepared some keynote speeches and special sessions for you. And in this session, we will listen from the experts in the global startup ecosystem to hear about the ecosystems, present and the future. So please look forward to hearing these insightful messages. And also on our official websites and YouTube channels, you can also listen to this session simultaneously. And you may also leave some questions and messages on the websites in real time. So please feel free to leave messages or questions online. And also simultaneous interpretation is provided for you. For English, please tune your receiver channel to Channel 2. And this special channel, a special session is titled "The Asian Startup Ecosystems, Present and the Future." As you are waiting for this presentation, let me introduce this session's presenter.
He led the establishment of the Korean branch of Plug and Play, and he also has experiences in fostering startups and supporting investment in Hong Kong and Singapore. Currently, he has been working as a CEO of Penn Ventures, overseeing programs to support startups continue to prosper and innovation. Please give him a big round of applause.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Song Young-su from Penn Ventures. I am so delighted to be given this opportunity to deliver a presentation. And I believe that many speakers will talk about various topics. And today, I'd like to focus on the investment market in Korea, especially the startup investment markets. The situation will be my focal point. And then I'll also talk about my company. And also, I'll talk about antlers and move back startups and other startup-related companies where you will be able to receive some support. So we'll be talking about how to be in good cooperation with the global investors. So the theme of my presentation is changing from VC to AC. The reason I chose this topic for this presentation is because not only the investment situation, but also the overall economic situation is not in our favor. So if we just take a look back on the past 10 years, and we are now entering into a high inflation period with high interest rates. And many of you might not have experienced such a period in your life. There are many programs supporting startups, for example, ACs and VCs and Ps and also the governments. But the problem here is that there has been a frozen flow of investment from the top to the bottom. So many VCs and ACs are also supporting startups. Still, we are now believing that this will be supported by VCs and such a movement will be accelerating in the future. That's why I chose this topic, changing from VC to AC. And in the current situation, if you were aspiring to receive a Series B, then I believe that all the VCs and Ps will be looking into follow-up investments. And actually, the pipeline investment will be no longer available because of the dire economic situation for the next year and the year after. So let's think about an example. Let's say that we have the A investment company, and he has a portfolio of A, B, and C. And then in the past, he could have invested in a different company outside of his portfolio. But this cannot be viable in the future for a period of time. We have around 200 VCs and around 100 ACs, and they take around 40 to 60% of the funds from the government. But we have been announced that the funds from the government will be down to 40%. So investors are quite reluctant to venture into a new fields of investment. You might think their CVs would be different. However, the situation is the same for the CVs because it has been only a couple of years since we have seen a vibrant activities from the CVs. However, many of them are facing difficulties in terms of the infrastructure and framework to have more investment. So we have large conglomerates like ALZ and then Samsung. But they also need to take three to five years to establish a CVs. So the whole situation is not in our favor. And many of the audiences are from the Korean startups. And also, we have foreigners who are quite interested in operating businesses in Korea. So I just shared my view on the overall economic situation of Korea. And the theme of this entire exhibition is about flying to the world and Asia. So many of the startups are keenly interested in going into a global market. And as an accelerator, we are trying our best to help out Korean startups to explore other overseas markets. And however, it's very hard and difficult for them to get investment from a foreign investors. So techs and other VCs and ACs will be sharing the same theme with you later on. So we'll be talking about the global investors who are interested in Korean startups. But the overall investment situation is not in our favor because the size of the total funds is shrinking. And the government has been leading that investment, but the government has decided to change its role recently. So the size of the fund they are operating is going to be down by 40%. And they will be more interested in the supporting TIPS programs in the future. So if you are also operating unicorn programs or Big Street programs, so the size of the funds for these programs will not shrink because of the government interests. And also, around 15 to 20% of the total investment are supported by individual investors. And the government is very much interested in increasing this proportion to 30%. So I told you that the TIPS Supporting Program will continue next year and the year after. And also, there is another program announced by the government. And this program is focusing on 10 different fields for support. So if you are running a startup, I also recommend you to look into those programs learned by the government. And this was just another example. And most of the people in Korean startups are familiar with this TIPS program. But I'll just talk about this program briefly for foreign investors. We do have a TIPS program for Korean startups. And also, there are global inbound programs. And also, we also have startups which is very much interested in a TIPS program in Korea. And if you are a global investor or a global startup, I also urge you to look into the government-funded and company-operated programs like TIPS. TIPS is a program that the government is supporting startups if the startup is funded by the VC or AC. And the equivalent amount of money will be funded by the government. That is the core message of the TIPS program. And I said that the theme of this presentation is from VC to AC. You might think that AC is investing in the early stage and the VC takes up the latter stage. However, the role of the AC is not confined to the seeds in early stage alone because in the investment ecosystem in Korea, the role of AC will be expanding in the future. It's not because I am running and operating an accelerating company. It is because of the change of the attitude from the government because most of the government-funded organizations are supporting ACs. And also, if you are running a program by the CVC, they are also working with other ACs. So if you are having a VC program, and then they are also welcome to have a cooperation with ACs. So we have 400 ACs in Korea, and they are covering all sorts of different business fields. So if you are running a startup, then I also advise you to find opportunity to work with an AC. There are many tech people from academia. And also, there are also companies like Lexi Unicorn, which is one of the directors of this program. And these academia and companies are welcoming the startups who are asking for support. And this is just a picture. We have around 400 ACs, but few of them are in operation actually. So around 50 ACs are in active operation. And so what I would like to mention here is that VCs are going to face a very dire situation in the future. So there are many VCs who are here to forge MOUs. But if you are now running a VC, I think that they expected a return of investment is not as promising as it used to be in the future because of the... So the news is now covering that, for example, issue tech was... The value of the issue tech was down by 1/10th, meaning that almost half of the value of these issue tech companies have been lost. But the ACs are facing a different future because most of the ACs are talking about small values in supporting startups. So actually, the fluctuation in terms of the range of the fluctuation is quite relatively small for the ACs. So the situation for the AC is brighter in comparison to the VCs. So that is the message I'd like to cover, to share with you today. So what I'm saying is that there are many ACs and VCs who are very much interested in supporting startups. And we also have global ACs here, and they have great networks and great strengths and distinctive specialties. So I'd like you to venture into the global ACs and also Korean ACs to be supported for your company. So for the next five minutes, I'd like to talk about my company. We started as an education company with the corona and so now only the CVs. We also have been working with large conglomerates like SKs. SK has over 60 startups, like external startups. And we are helping out these startups in terms of expanding into overseas markets. And Penn Ventures is supporting many startups who are very much interested in overseas markets. So our specialty is providing support for the startups interested in overseas markets. Not only the investment, we are also very much interested in supporting a follow-in investment. So Mr. Song Yoo-sing is a member of our company. And also, we are working on various types of open innovation. SK is one of the most vibrant companies in Korea, along with the Samsung and others. And also, one of our members has been involved in designing this startup 15 years ago. So he's been helping out. And also, the former vice minister, Che, is also helping us as an advisor. And also, we are very much specialized in supporting startups in taking into the overseas markets. And we have special manpower for this. There are some startups who face very difficult situation in the US for various reasons, like the marketing or technical issues and et cetera. Sometimes, they just chose the wrong city or city. That's why they did not have a success in the US. So we have a special manpower who is specialized in the market analysis. And also, we have also a manpower who has been quite active in marketing and also global marketing and also analysis. And also, Mr. Mike Lovins is also specializing in global team building. He worked for Boeing for 15 years. And he had experiences of hiring top-tier engineers and helping them to get a seat into the company. So these are our main power. And so, along with the investment, we are also operating various types of programs. I am not just talking about this program because I want to just be boastful of my company, but I think they are quite useful for you. The Big Street Program is now helping out 300 startups in the field of systems, semiconductor, and future sector and et cetera. So we will be able to select around 200 startups on a yearly basis. And actually, this program provides a large amount of funds for startups. And what is important is that if you are selected for this program, then your company will be funded for three years, which is quite unique in our country. And we are helping out various types of startups. And this Big Street Program will be active next year as well. So if you are interested, please apply for this Big Street Program for the next year. And this is another program, which is run by five accelerators. And this one is quite well-known for the startups. And this is called a Green Challenge 2022. We support around 60 startups around the world. And half of the startups were from Asian countries like Singapore and Hong Kong and China. So if you are running a startup, then you please also venture into this Grand Challenge 2022. And this program helps out many startups now. So Seoul City and also Metropolitan Cities support startups as well. But this program, this challenge program is available for startups. And there are many support programs run by the Seoul Metropolitan City. And as I mentioned earlier, large conglomerates are helping out startups. And so, startups are being interested in cooperating with the large conglomerate. There are on the three, sorry, industry complexes. In Seoul, there is a Kuro industry complex. And there is a R&amp;D complex in Magog, which is run by the Seoul City. And there are many R&amp;D centers of a large conglomerate, so brothers and sisters. So large conglomerates are making investment for startups from the R&amp;D point of view. So there are many and various programs run by the large conglomerates. So, for example, this industry complex in Magog has working spaces available for startups. And if you are interested, then you have to forge a MOU with the large conglomerates or you have to be funded by the large conglomerates, which are also in the industry complex. But what is unique here is that if you are selected, then you will be promoted, you will be funded and supported for two years. And not only Seoul, but Metropolitan City also has various startup support programs. So as I mentioned earlier, from the economic point of view, the future situation will not be as bright as we hope. However, I hope that you could make the best out of the startup support programs run by large conglomerates and also metropolitan cities. And also, we have great accelerators who are supporting startups to venture into overseas markets. So please also listen to the presentations from the next speakers. That is it for me.
Thank you. It was Song Young-su, Managing Director of Penn Ventures. Those who are aiming to go global or interested in entering global markets have been really, could enjoy his presentation. And if you have any questions for him, please save it for the end of this session. And you may also post your questions online. And next, I will introduce second presenter. This is Pe Jin-ho, Director of Techstars. He is linking startups to Coltra and Kyonggi Center for Creative Economy and Innovation. And he is also in charge of incubating and accelerating startups at Techstars. Please give him a big round of applause.
Good afternoon. I'm Pe Jin-ho. So it was a very great introduction of myself, but I don't think I'm very special. But I'm here to meet with you and to share my insight and experience that I've earned while meeting with other startup people. And that way, I would like to contribute to the development of startups in Korea. So I have given much thoughts about what I will deliver on today's presentation. And some of you may have also listened to my presentation previously. But today, I selected the title for today's presentation as the things that I have found among the Korean startups, their strength and weakness. So Techstar is not actually that much famous in Korea, but we were founded in 2007 in the mid Colorado, Boulder, in America. So it was started, it started as a very small company in Boulder. And Boulder is a very countryside in America. And why did they come up with this accelerating firm in that countryside? There was no such, actually, a reason. It was just a middle place where the two founders reside at that time. So, but the basic concept is that the innovation can take place everywhere. So they were not actually, they actually was not obsessed about where they start their business. And their first program took place in 2013. And so far, we have produced over 1,000 unicorn companies from our programs. And these days, we produce many companies and startups about the ESG. And if you are interested in doing business in the United States, it would be good if you have some better understanding about the ESG. And you can also take consideration of ESG concept. Because in Korea, ESG is quite close to eco-friendliness. But actually, ESG is about diversity and social impact. So what kind of social impact you can make and what kind of diversity aspect you have in your business is something that VCs must ask to startups. So it seems that in Korea, ESG is mostly about eco-friendliness or environmental aspects in Korea. So that's what I think is quite missing in Korea. And around the world, we are operating 50 programs. And there are different areas, but I will skip that right now. And I would like to focus on this slide, actually. So yesterday, I received 50 pitch decks. And last week, I reviewed 20 some. And do you know the Foxconn in Taiwan? And when they select EV-related startups, actually, and those who were selected as a Y combinator, their valuation is very much increasing right now. And I've seen many of their pitch decks. And the global startups which are posting... And the global startups which are posting a sound growth are, they really identify the problems that they solve in a very clear manner. So some Korean startups actually identify the problems in some vague ways. So I think that this is the area, the problem identification area is what the Korean startups should focus. And when it comes to prepare materials and backup materials, please do not use any second-hand materials. So please use all the data you have directly gathered. And so it will... So some startups, actually, even though they have a very clear market and problem, they are too much focused on their product alone. So this is the, what the weaknesses the startups actually have globally. And Y combinator actually call this in a term as S-I-M-P. Solution in Search for Problem, S-I-M-P. So this is what many startups experience right now. And statistically, these startups have very lower chance of going successful. So, so in terms of problem solving, you have to make sure that whether you are trying to solve big enough problem. So how big is that should be? Well, logically, you will be able to build up the problem and the market should be big enough. And you can actually say that the fast-growing market actually grows twelve percent a year and our market grows thirteen percent. And if there is a reference growth rate, then it can be backed by it. And without it, if you just cite some research data and the market size and market problems, then it will not be that much logical. And Jonathan Venske is the person that I most admire. And he is, he used to be the only space accelerator. And this is what he once said. "Please," he said, "please, please." "Leave any information created inside your building." This is what he said. Well, it might not actually be applied to startups, but if you are early stage, early stage, then please leave any information that is created inside a building, but look into that information and analyze it before presenting it. And if you use a second-hand information, then there can be a problem like this, which is more elaborated in the next slide. And when it comes to problem itself, there can be different types of it. And, and this kind of concept is actually what Korean startups lack mostly. There can be a real problem, there can be a problem that make people suffer, or there can be a problem that people aiming to solve. And so, so there can be different kinds of, different definition of problem. And so I want the Korean startups to be more specific about defining what problems they would like to solve. And this is example I really like to share with you. And some research, some startups actually gave presentations. And some researchers say that they saw newspaper news articles and they learned that there is less use of incubator in a remote country. So they came up with the incubator. And they received award and they were highly appraised. And X, but they actually developed this incubator business because they received many feedback from experts and professionals. And they actually made trip to that country, Nepal. And they learned that there were some incubators actually in Nepal. But when the babies are born in a village, they actually die while on their way to the hospital. So that's why there is a low use of incubator in Nepal. So they moved incubator in the village, but there was also low uses rate. And they actually learned that there was a myth in Nepal which says that if the, if they cannot see their heart of the babies after they are born, the babies will have a premature death. So, so from that, they learned this kind of myth and they decided to let the baby's heart be shown from the incubator. So after that, the incubator uses rate went up. So please do some field study and please get insights directly from the market. And the insight is normally what the market itself has, not the customer, individual customer has. Customers actually are not aware of what they really want. And, but there can be some repetitive trend of the customers who do not know what they want. And if there is such a trend, then you can say that there is some missing part in the market. So you, from that, you can learn some insight, not the data. And based on that insight, you can collect some data. And when it comes to the business development, there can be concept of what we do and who I am. And these are actually different. In order to appeal your business, you have to more elaborate what you do and who you are. And actually, Korean startups are more focused on who I am. And if you were talking about who I am, then actually, my company's decision makers review hundred startup pitch decks and said that these are all not like startup pitch deck because they are actually focused on the who I am. So it is like the application for the patent. So these pitch deck do not talk about what they really would like to do with their business. So you have to think hard about what you do, not who you are. So when it comes to who I am, it can be, we actually combine the machine learning with the other technology to boost the production efficiency. So we are a company. And that can be who I am part. And when it comes to what we do, we actually can boost the production rate by twenty percent. So this is about what we do. And this is what you have to focus on. And, and we actually had a ten-year anniversary event with the Korea Investment Company. And this is also what we shared with them. This is team, the key four considerations that you have to consider to go global. So first T is team. And when it comes to team, there should be an execution speed and the connectivity or the team-building spirit is very important. The product that startups produce actually start to earn some money when it is from twenty-seven versions. So for your company to go to twenty-seven times of product production, then there should be lean startup and there should be fast execution and there should be very close team spirit. So until that trials, the team actually should survive. And you can actually appeal to investors if you can prove that we can survive until that trials. And there used to be a CTO who said that he is a rocket science CTO at the end of their presentation deck. Actually, rocket science is the most advanced and cutting-edge science field in the USA. So if you talk about this, our team is comprised of this person and this person and this person. And if you just list all the references and backgrounds, then please make sure that all your background is translated, not just into English or into Korean, but what really that background means. And when it comes to exclusivity, standing for E, well, actually, Koreans mostly talk about X-axis and Y-axis in competition grade. And, and this grade, a competition, competition grade should be actually marked as all checked, but some startups leaves themselves empty. But rather than trying to fill all this grid, but please think about where you have unfair advantages. And let me skip this A part. And when it comes to M part, this is very important because as I have worked for Techstars for three years, I really got to learn the importance of the community. I've heard about it many times. And the importance of community is actually decided by mentor. And mentorship also needs to be redefined, I think. Mentors are those who go before me one to two steps and who can give me some tips and advices. And it can be anyone, the professors, the students. And please be open-minded and please have some, build relationships and connections to different kinds of people and mentors. And these connections will be very powerful in the future. And if I just gather four different people from four different fields, then it really created immense power. So if I just have a one-on-one relationship with four each respective people, it was just a one-on-one relationship. But I had a chance to have a dinner with all these four people. And exclusivity deal was made from that dinner table. So you do not know when something important can happen. And Techstars believe in surrender pity. So please, you should also believe in this and try to build your own connections. So do not just have one-on-one and one-time meetings when you go to the United States, but think of them as you are sowing seeds in the United States. And you never know how these connections and how these seeds will bloom in the future. And, and luck is something you can cultivate as well. So be mindful of this. This is the end of my presentation, thank you.
So he told us about the key components for the success of startups. And I was also touched by his speech because he said that what is important is not who we are, but what we do. So after all the presentation is over, we will have a dedicated panel discussion session. So if you have any questions to the speakers, please save the questions or for the panel discussion session. And now we're going to have the third speaker for this conference. And we have a CEO of Antler Korea, Ms. Cheung Sa-oon. He has been working in the domestic and foreign companies for more than ten years. And his experiences in investing in domestic and foreign companies, especially as a CVC manager at GS Teal. Currently, he is working as the CEO of Antler Korea, overseeing domestic and foreign technology startups, fostering investment attraction programs. Please give him a big round of applause.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon again, my name is Cheung Sa-oon from Antler Korea. So when I was asked to deliver a presentation on this specific topic, I just thought about what I should be talking about. And I decided to focus on the Antler's viewpoint on the Korean startup ecosystem, which is a very simple but important topic to share with you. So on the yearly basis, around thirty-five thousand VC investments are being made on the global basis. And so it means that around eight hundred trillion won is funded by VCs. In Korea, we have around twelve hundred cases. And so the VC investments has been quite promising, supporting a big number of startups. But do you think it is enough, it is sufficient? You might think that this number is quite huge. But from our standpoint, I think, and we think that this number is not sufficient because there are so many important issues that must be addressed and handled on the global basis. But compared to the rising number of challenges, the number of new founders who are aspired to solve those problems are quite low. To think about this number sounds again. So this is the number of VC investments on a yearly basis, meaning the number of new founders. So only around sixty percent of the cases are receiving seed investment. And we have four hundred in Korea and also eight thousand in North America. And if you just think that there will be two people comprising one team, then we will have eight hundred founders in Korea and sixteen thousand in North America. But the ratio of the founders to the total population of the whole, the entire planet is quite small because in Korea, the number of founders to the, the percentage of new founders to the total population stands at point zero zero one. If you take a close comparison between the North America and South Korea, so we have sixteen thousand new founders in the North America, whereas South Korea has eight hundred founders. So on a yearly basis, meaning that we are twenty times lower than that of North Korea. So the figure tells volumes to us because if you think about new innovations from the quality and quantity point of view and also the range and the level of diversity and the speed of innovation, the deep gap between South Korea and North America is quite huge. And there are many VC capitalists here. And they are also working very fastly in Korea, but also they are quite much interested in the North American market. There are many great founders and great startups being established in Korea. However, from our standpoint, Antler believes that South Korea's startup ecosystem has a long way to go. For example, if you think about K-Games and K-Pubs and also... For example, uh if you think about the K games and K pops and also uh actually, there are many fields where South Koreans has a great leadership. And actually, South Korea was able to have great success out of these fields because we have a very vibrant is infrastructure for the success. And not at the time is for the uh startup ecosystem. So far, uh many uh public funds have been vibrantly supporting uh the, the growth of startups from the uh qualitative point of view. It's now time to think about the also a uh qualitative point of view, not the quantitative uh growth only. So uh we are uh an accelerator eh from a private sector. And without our help, there will be a reign of new startups and with great innovation in the future. However, what we believe is that this set uh type of movement has been, has to be accelerated. And in order to accelerate the face of new startups and innovations, we need to do more. And what we need to do is to look into the great uh professionals who are working very hard at companies. And we uh also need to give them an ambition to start their own businesses. I'm not saying that all of the uh prof, uh professionals working for companies should start their own business. Uh but I'm saying is that some of them who has the uh viewpoint of entrepreneurs must be supported to establish their own company. We have many people working for large conglomerates and SMEs and also professional firms like law firms and consulting firms and accounting firms. And also many professionals working for medical institutions, research institutions and welfare institutions. And there are many people, uh great talents in academia like eh uh uh in graduate schools and et cetera. I believe that these people has to be uh be uh empowered and given an ambition to establish their own businesses. I think they have uh keen inter, keen interest in uh starting their own business. More than fifty percent of millennia has lower income than their previous generations. Meaning that uh for the first time in the history of humankind, we are not able to face up with the, the, with our apparent in terms of wealth accumulation. And also, yeah, in South Korea's income and wealth polarization index is among the highest in the world. So also uh if you also think about the uh the earned, the income of millennia, it's highly unlikely that their income will increase in comparison to the inflation. And also uh in comparison to the uh past generations, the millennials uh have lower percentage of homeownership than previous generations. However, we have been listening to great news about a uh millennials who have founded great companies. And we also uh uh carry news about early-stage startups who have been funded and who are moving into the next stages. So there are so many great talents in Korea and many of them are aspiring to become an entrepreneur. But dream should be realized. And there are many uh great uh talents in Korea and they also have the ability to go into and enter into a global market. Think about our strengths. We are very uh, we are very speedy in getting things done. And also, we have the uh the brand, the ability to make a brand out of the other products on a global basis. And also uh in terms of entering into a foreign market, many Korean entrepreneurs believe that it is a must. And also they have accumulated experiences in, on the global basis. And many Korean entrepreneurs are very fluent in uh foreign language. And also they have a great drive for economic success and the IT and mobile services among the highest in the world. And also Koreans are very demanding customers. We have the, the customers and you know also the, the production line at the same place. And Koreans are working very, very hard. The ITQ of Antler do believe that Koreans are one of the most hard-working people in the world. And we have a very high eh uh ego and pride and pride and also responsibility. There are twenty-four branches in the world uh for the Antler and all, less than five percent of a pre, preliminary founders dropped the course. Meaning that Koreans have a very high level of responsibility in getting things done. Still, their threshold for a co, for founding a company is still very high for various reasons. People are afraid of their uncertainty in uh for the success and also career break. And this is also eh that, that uh easy to find a co-founder. And we are also having anxiety to uh for, in terms of the livelihood. And also it is quite hard to attract the, the funds for the, the, for the forming a fa, the fa, uh company. So in order to have uh the Korean talent to find, to, to their own way of entrepreneurship, we have a startup learning program which uh should uh support startups from day one. And this program is applicable for the entire eh branches of Antler around the world. The reason we are offering such a program does not uh guarantee that the, the success will, will just come uh generally. And but last uh the uh month, we started the first batch of Korean founders and nine hundred people applied for the first batch of the program. So the application was accepted for two months, very short, but still nine, more than nine hundred people applied for the program from various backgrounds. We have applicants from the C, uh Series B startups and also ASA companies and consulting companies. And also so uh some of the uh applicants were professionals in the fields of medicine or pharmacy. And they were able to receive investments successfully. Not only that, we gathered applicants, they uh amazingly met with total strangers. And within eighteen weeks of time, they were able to find co-founders. And they found a, identified the problems and solutions and got the, the solutions verified. So uh we invested uh the, onto these companies through the pre-seed. And most, and many of the uh uh startups are already making money despite the fact that there has been only a few months since establishment of these startups. What I'm saying is that this is a viable solution. You might think that this is idea and good to hear, but you might not believe that this is actually happening. But this is happening because we have lowered the threshold for a fa, for the uh startups. And many people experienced that their life has been transformed thanks, thanks to our program. So this is the feedback from the applicants. So the entire bet stands for six months. And some applicants said that it is worth investing six months of my lifetime into this. Because if this is not working, I can go back to my own uh old job or I can just move to another field still. Within the six months of period of time, I can make a transformation of my life. Actually, uh we are uh investing in the Angel Fund. For example, there are many companies which are fragmented and, and these companies uh needs a lot more than anything. So the founders and also startup teams were very, working very hard from the scratch. And of course, founding a company is a challenging eh uh course. But from our standpoint, there are various ways to help out the, the startups to make it easier for them. Because we have accumulated various types of uh knowledge and experience. But from the startup's point of view, we need to, they need to think about what is the most optimal solution to make their life easier. So when, as we enter into this field, we have been leading as an institution, systemizing all those uh sort of resources for the startups. So that the great uh minds uh and talent who also be bo, be encouraged to enter into these startups. There, so the world needs more founders than ever. Thank you.
Thank you for the powerful presentation. It was the third presenter, Mr. Cheung Sa-oon from Antler. Please give him a big round of applause once again. So we have listened to three presentations so far and I believe many of you have found it very helpful and instructive. And I would like to invite all these three presenters to the stage to listen to more insights from them and for this Q and A session. And this Q and A session will be moderated by Mr. Chang Jeyong, President of Next Unicorn. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. Yes, with Mr. Chang Jeyong, Mr. Song Young-su, Song Young-su, Mr. Be Jin-ho and Mr. Cheung Sa-oon will all come up to the stage. Please give him a big hand. So now I will leave um the microphone to the moderator, Mr. Chang. Hello, I am Chang Jeyong of Next Unicorn. So in Seoul, I have staged, we have staged many different activities. So uh let me give you some brief introduction of Next Unicorn. Next Unicorn is to connect startups, accelerator investors. So we are an online platform and we have worked with sixteen thousand startups using our platform. And they are sharing information about themselves. And around more than one thousand companies are using our platform to invest in startups. And we have attracted more than four hundred fifty billion won uh in the first half of this year from our platform. So we have made very satisfying success. But we, on the other hand, have many issues because we have many domestic startups listed on our platform. Then how can we actually attract global investors? And how can we actually help domestic startups going global? So how can we actually create a platform for these kind of opportunities? These are the issues that we have been thinking about very hard many years. And we have these presenters with us who have most, who have many years of experience in this industry. And as I am also the CEO of a startup, when I meet with other CEOs, then we think how to actually go global. And I think these issues can be solved and from this Q and A session. And I first would like to take this opportunity to thank these three gentlemen for being here with us today. So uh before we are getting into the Q and A session, uh let me share with you some questions that we have um received uh before this session actually. And and after that, we will open the uh stays for the questions. And this is, the first question is that uh compared to other um areas, what will be the advantages that Asia startups have? This kind of, this can be a very difficult question, but uh it would be good if uh these three people can share their thoughts on this question briefly. Would you please take turns to answer to this question? Well, as you have already shared with us, actually the question itself is very tricky because um uh if you say that Asian startups, it is very hard to define who Asian startups are. So to give you some answers broadly and, and talk about the, the advantages that Korean startups have, then actually whether the Korean startups have strong points, actually the each individual startup have different strength and different advantages. I cannot tell that. But when it comes to the um startup ecosystem and startup environment, actually Korea is the best place to start a business. Well, the, different countries have different environment. And Antler um CEO actually shared that there are some areas that Korea needs to work harder to create better environment for the startups. But well, rather than the advantages that the startup, Korean startups have, but I would like to put it this way, because anyone can start a business, but Korea can be a very good uh place where you can start a business. Because when you compare it to China and Southeast Asia and, well, it, it actually differs when, if it is Vietnam and the Philippines, so each country has different um backgrounds. So, so I cannot actually tell the whole the Asian startups' advantages. Okay, so the, the Asian startups in the question makes this question very tricky. So let me share with you the strong points that Korean startups share. Well, Korean startups have very um talented people and they are very highly educated. But when it comes to commercialization and business on concept development, it's something that they um have been difficult, but they are also showing some improvement in this area as well. So I um, well, in previous years, I actually couldn't say that Korean startups are um have very high competencies. But right now, I can see that Korean companies and Korean startups have higher, higher competencies and they have higher um advantages compared to other startups in Asian countries right now. But it seems that we are still have some sentiment that we are actually in between Japan and China. So some startups still think that I need to grow uh further to go global. But I want to encourage Korean startups to go global first and, and have more pride in yourselves and look to different markets around the world. So whether it's Koreans but also Asians compared to Westerners have very weak narratives, I believe. Because um the Western entrepreneurs have this kind of imaginative concept. So they actually start their stories uh from imaginative. But when it comes to Asian and Korean startup entrepreneurs, they are more focused on the product side. So uh rather than the problem definition, they are more focused on the product and solution definition. So they are weak in narratives and they are quite obsessed with the uh product stuff. So we can say that we, we really need to uh excel in what we make and in our products. So they are very much um, uh they are putting much uh energy and investment in creating their products. So that's the strong point they have. And on the other hand, uh rather than it's the uh compared advantages compared to other areas, but the areas that Korean startups have developed in the recent years is the global business um sentiment. Because Korean startups nowadays think that we will go global uh once we grow. And domestic market itself is also quite sizable. But these days, Korean startups actually look to the global markets. And even though it is quite difficult to go to Asian markets, the Korean startups have quite um, uh have uh confidence in going these, these markets. So this is uh where the Korean and Asian startups uh have strength, I believe. And, and the Singaporean companies go to other countries in Southeast Asia. And so they have broader viewpoint when it comes to their market. So this can be viewed as strong point of Asian market, as Asian startups. Well, it was the quite a tricky question because it is hard for us to group startups in Asian market because uh it really differs by country and region. because it really differs by country and region. So, and when you talk about the Asian startups, talking about the global market, then you cannot actually say it without mentioning the US market. But though it's a tricky question, actually, these all three presenters have shared their insight about their views about the Korean startups. And thank you for that. And let me move on to the next question. And Asian startup ecosystem is how, so how it is right now and what kind of opportunities and crisis the Asian startup ecosystem has? It's another tricky question. So, it would be good if you could share with us the domestic startup ecosystems' current status and what kind of opportunities and crisis or challenges do you think they have? And shall we move from Mr. Cheong first?
Well, the thing that I believe is very good is that we can have the world-class unicorns from Korean market and we see some success story in Korean market. And based on that experience, we can take pride in that. And all these startup methodologies and concepts are being learned by Korean startups right now at a fast pace. And that's a very great asset that we right now have. And when it comes to opportunities and challenges, then it can be viewed as challenges and opportunities at the same time. Then there are two things. And the thing that the macroeconomy is slowing down and how it will impact the startup ecosystem is the first opportunity and challenge that we have. Things are very difficult, that's true. And the American and the advanced countries' investment can be more focused on the advanced countries or they can also make some investment in the largely populated Asia market. So, this really, this is something that we have to wait and see and where the money will go under this difficult situation. And that's what we have to see going forward. And another opportunity and challenge is the ESG, I believe. So, ESG actually is some, is a, is a part of the paradigm shift, I believe, that the advanced countries would like to have. And this is something that European countries hardly drive. And America is also the country that is driving this movement as well. And the climate tech company from the Northern Europe company is showing strength in this area. And there are some, are some startups who can compete with these companies. And if Korean government invests in these startups, then that can be a good opportunity for us. But if we become complacent with it and if we just lose timing for entering this market, then the advanced countries will continue to produce ESG startups and they can come to Asia. So, if we lose timing and if we just stay complacent with it, then it can be a huge challenge to us.
Yes. So, yes, we plan to go to the Asia market. And as we have the kind of move, we have very abundant support from the government and the public. So, and Korean, Korea show, Korea has the environment where you can make a mistake. So, I lived in Sweden for seven years and there is a large number of companies compared to population. And I was curious about why it is that. Well, there is academia and research center, cooperation, and there is good welfare policies, but all these are weaker than Korea. But how could they come up with so many different corporations? Because the society actually accepts problems, accepts mistakes. So, even if they make a mistake, they can restart a business and they can start all over again. And Korea is moving that direction right now. So, I would like to say that this is an opportunity that is being created before us. And the challenge that I believe is that like China and Japan and Korea is also focused on the expert when it comes to the economic development. So, the older decision-making and the older generations and business has been, actually, has been a certain type, certain direction of doing business, from domestic to global. But right now, we can view the global market as a whole because there is non-contact communication available right now. So, you can think of the global area as a whole and you should think where I can start my business fast. And then you can move from that market. It can be anywhere in the world. So, and that way, you can have very different driving forces. If you, because if you start in the Korean market and if you go, and then you go global and if you start all over again in the global market, then it may take a lot of time. But if you just view this global market as a whole and start from that, then it will make a different story.
So, let us go back to the definition of Asia. Briefly, I read a book titled The Future to be Reshaped by Asia. It was written by economists from India. And from his point of view, his definition of Asia is quite broad. He believes that South America should be included in the Asia as well. So, he says that all the countries surrounding the Pacific Ocean should be defined as Asian countries. For example, Austria should be a part of the Asia. And so, so the definition of Asia is a bit limited. And from our standpoint, we thought that India is of course a part of Asia, Pakistan, but we have some customs laws. But if you think about Pakistan with a population of a two-point-five billion and the people thought that Pakistan and Kazakhstan and these countries belong to Middle East. But these, actually, Kazakhstan and Pakistan, they do believe that they are part of Asia. So, if you think about Russia, Vladivostok is a city that belongs to Russia and Vladivostok is also on the Pacific coast. So, I believe that the definition of Asia should be expanded. If we go to Vietnam, and we have been running great education program there because of the growth potential there in Vietnam. In terms of advanced countries like Sweden and Germany and the US, the growth potential is quite limited. So, the market share of some certain companies are down at twenty-two percent only. That's why they are looking into overseas markets. I also worked in Singapore and Hong Kong. And these countries are also thinking about expanding the market. They think that Asia is a focal point. Still, Singapore the hub of Asia. And Antler's headquarters is located in Antler. Actually, Antler came from Norway and they has headquarters in Singapore. And to be very honest with you, most of the successful business cases in Korea are just the copies of the success stories of other countries. Except for some innovative solutions. The reason why companies coming to Asian market is because there are many problems to solve, such as the ESG issues. In the case of Germany, actually, Germany is advanced country and the population and the market is matured. And in terms of the environment issues, they have less issues than we have. That's why, from the global company's point of view, they could also just divide the Asian markets into several parts. And now, most of the companies are looking into Singapore as the hub for their companies. So, what I'm saying is that Asian economy is growing in companies to other regions. There is growth potential here in Asia. And as part of the open innovations, we talked about the APW, it is the Alliance Against Plastics Waste. It's like a global consortium. And fifty good energy and chemistry companies established this consortium to solve environmental issues, such as rolling the volume of waste. And the hub of this association is in Singapore. And their target market is Africa and Indonesia because there are many problems solved. There are many plastics and the water quality is poor and as people do not reuse the garbage and waste in these countries. That's why the association is looking into this target market. And also, they are also going to the South America because there are many problems to be solved in South America as well. So, Asia, I believe that Korea has a very great environment in favor of startups. But also from a growth potential point of view, Asia is also a great market. Yes, in continuing Asia, we need to think about how to define the Asian market. So, I think that you have very diverse experiences in the Asian market. So, if you just pinpoint one location, then we will also have great stories to tell. In the case of Japan, actually, eighty percent of the startups exit thanks to the M and A. And also, around a ten billion to three billion ends of startups are being, some money is being poured into the startups for the exit. And in the case of last year, the cases of the investment in Asia was the greatest among the world, not based on the number of startups. Of course, in terms of the amount of money and the funds, North America still stands as number one. But how, in terms of the new cases of Asia stood at the world's first. So, we will also continue with the next question. Yes, so if you just think about the Asia, there are so many stories to tell. But let us now think about one specific case to think about the future trends. So, the example I talk about is like this. We're going to face a recession and it is a fact that we have a shrinking investment in terms of demand pouring into the startups. So, the, some experts say that the global investment will be down by twenty-six percent this year alone. So, it was like four hundred one, trillion won last year. And now, the amount is down by twenty-six percent. So, it will be like six hundred to seven hundred trillion ones. The overall trend is that the money invested into startups is shrinking. However, early investment has been increasing by eleven percent. So, the United States experts say that there are underestimated early startups. So, people, if people make investment in the underestimated early startups, that they could make a high profit in the future. This is the viewpoint of global investors. And in the case of Asia, let us now focus on the Korean market. And we have three experts. And in times of recession, as an accelerator, we need to think about how to boost the early investment. Let's think about your viewpoint, starting from Antler. So, we are investing in pre-seed and seed companies as a local investor. And actually, we have a local investment in South Korea. And the first batch of the program is now in operation for sixteen startups. And the cost, the value money was over two hundred million won. For the next few years, we're going to directly invest, make direct investment into Korean startups. And on the global basis, in two thousand twenty-three, we believe that for the next ten years, that we are going to have the best advantage from two thousand twenty-three. Meaning that many people say that we're going to face a dire situation. However, we were quite aggressive in investment because of the reasons. So, we are not taking approach to just plant a seed throughout. What I'm doing is that we start our own startups and also we are in collaboration with seniors to ensure equality of our investment. That's why you could take more aggressive approach moving forward. We are very much like Antler, so I have a little to add to his comments. So, we are making a fixed investment, like it is optional, but it is around one hundred thousand dollars and one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we are investing into five hundred companies. But for the next ten years, our invasion is to make investment into five thousand companies on the global basis. So, we will be accelerating our investment portfolio in the future. Thank you very much. And we've been talking about the investment from a company's point of view. So, our company is relatively new. And we started a business in Korea this year and we made a investment into eight cases this year alone. And there are various roles that we are ambitious to take. As I mentioned earlier, we have four hundred visas. So, there is a big competition between visas. And we have tips, operators, and so many visas which are compete against each other to find the great aspiring startups. And we are focusing on businesses which might help other visas and visas. For example, the Big Three program is a good example. We are the host company, not the investment. So, for example, if a company A is interested in, in some, engaging investment from some companies, then we are giving them education to receive a proper investment. And we have fifty ACs and four hundred visas in Korea. And we are in close cooperation with these for them to enter into overseas markets. So, what I'm doing is to help the ACs and visas increase their exposure to the overseas market. Our focus next year is that many overseas clubs are interested in the Korean ecosystem. But in terms of the alliances between the Korean companies, we are not quite vibrant as other countries. But LG and Samsung, they are now taking the lead. And also, KVCs and IBK and all these financial companies are operating their own companies on a big scale. That's why they have seldom chances of collaborating with each other. But we had the twenty CVCs and open innovations and gather together and provide a forum for them to do the speech. So, next year, we will be focusing on organizing such an event. From a startup's point of view, the IBK and Antler, they are also, they're going to make investments. But from a startup's point of view, they are quite interested in the timing of the investments of these big companies. So, we'll be utilizing forces to make sure that startups will be able to get exposed to the investments on the right time. And we're thinking about around forty billion won of investments next year. Thank you for your comments. So, you have a very strong pride and also a high self-confidence in terms of, as an investor. So, I believe the startups are in a very good situation, working with the investors. So, we have a very bright future for the startups. And now, let's move on to the next. And now, let's move on to the next question. So, how do the VCs where the speakers belong to view the Asian and Korean startup ecosystem? And what efforts are they making to revitalize the Korean ecosystem? This question has been covered to some degree. So we will go back to this question later on at the end of the panel discussion. Let's move on to the next one. To what extent is the support for startups supported by the Asian-Korean government? And what kind of efforts and support do global VCs and government agencies need for public-private cooperation? This is a very complex question, so we are going to divide the question into two parts now. So, in Korea and in Asian countries, the government is helping out and supporting startups. And Korea is very much in favor of startups with great sources, resources for startups. And we are also wondering if other countries are also providing the same or equivalent level of support for startups? And also for the cooperation between private and public? What kind of efforts must be made by the government agencies and the global VCs? So from a venture capitalist's point of view and accelerator's point of view, especially the global players, they are being approached by the government to, so that they will make investment into the Korean market. But for the past few years, the Korean government worked very hard to help startups enter into the overseas market. But some of the efforts just were limited to a one-time event. And because of the language barrier and also the gaps in terms of the capabilities of the startups, their startups had a difficult time in getting funded by the global players. But now, there has been a shift in the global market. And there are many global firms more interested in the Korean startups. So the probability of having success for the startups getting into the overseas market is quite high. So in the case of Korea, we have good support from the government. And it speaks volumes to the Korean market. So and second, and accelerators and venture capitalists are also quite vibrant in the Korean market. And they might ask for governments having a specific field. So if you have, if you are in need of a specific type of help or support from the government, please do share your comments with the audience. Yes.
To answer to your question, I might need some privacy setting. It is quite dangerous to answer to this question in this public setting. But, well, one thing that I really missed in terms of the public support in Korea is that there are very new workforces in the government sector. But it would be good if there is more education and training in, for this new commerce. Because they have less understanding about what kind of support the VCs need and startups need. There were some challenges that we experienced. And there was also the lack of discussion, less discussion about what should be done to make it successful. And if the government provides this kind of support, what can be the success factors that we can think of? So it would be good if we can have this kind of comprehensive discussion about the success factors and the action items following this. And as there is less understanding about this, it is not that the governmental support is being made systematically. So or strategically, so I hope it becomes more strategic. So the definition of outcome is not clear. Yes, yes, I do understand what you mean by that. Well, it might sound different, but how much of the funding the government is providing to startups? And how well, how efficiently, they operate this fund? This isn't something that I can actually talk about. Well, they are being more efficient in raising these funds and operating these funds because this is something they haven't really actually done in the past. And they will make some improvement in terms of the efficient operation of the funds. And this whole metropolitan government is executing more and more funds for the startups. And as the Busan City Government is doing this as well, then they can learn from their mistakes. And so, rather than the quantitative aspects, I would like to actually talk about qualitative aspects for the Korean startups. Actually, I would like to say that, it's no offending, but Korean startups are actually quite winding when it comes to going global. They are acting like babies. Well, we go to this country and we would like to meet with fifteen VC firms there. So they say like this, we support them. But if they receive this kind of support, then it's like private tutoring. So when the student receives private tutoring that their mom sets up, then they are spoiled. And so, and if you just make your own efforts to learn more about the country that you visit and you excavate the people that you would like to meet, then they learn more than any others. And if the startups who actually want to just be in the startup settings and set up meetings, and if they just show up in the meetings that the government sets up, then they wouldn't get much from those meetings. So, yes, there are increasing amount of funding or support being made from the public side. So to learn and to reap more from that kind of support, you should be better prepared and you should think more strategically. And if that's so, then you can have more helping hands from the public side and from other sides as well. Yes, you have given us this answers from the public side and the startup side as well, so thank you. And, yes, the Korean government provides support for the startups. And whether it be big enough is the issue that we have been thinking about. And when I talk about this with global investors, all the programs provided by Korean government is something that other countries' investors envy of. Because whether it be the funding scale or the location and when it comes to service and the package solutions and all these subsidies and the connections between the embassies are being used to support the startups visiting the country. And all these have been used as the Korean government. So I would like to say that Korean government has made a lot of good efforts so far. And going forward, what they can do more is that they can actually set some goals. And as Mr. Ba shared with us, what is the outcomes that we want to achieve? This is what we have done. And how does this impact our outcome? There is no such an understanding, but there is just a checklist of doing some things. So there's a lot of administrators, but no indicators for the success. There is no such success factors. So I have thought about why this happens. And we, our economy actually has developed by, driven by the public side. And this can actually have some impact in startup ecosystem. But in this area, there are some parts that should be delegated to the private side. Well, I do understand that the private sector needs to do some parts and these things are transparent. And all the working level people are doing their jobs very well. But the high-ranking officials and whether it be in the government or in the parliament, well, there should be a paradigm shift among those in the high-ranking positions. Well, all these governmental support is very good. But when it comes to side effects, I can come up with many things. Because overseas investors say that when they learn about all the policies that support that Korean government provide, they are worried that, aren't they actually affecting the autonomy of startups? Because startups really value their autonomy. And autonomy is very important when it comes to startup business. So that's something that we have to also consider right now. So there is a very good and kind advice. And it's very helpful. And as startup CEOs and venture capital firms have some discussions, then when I meet with them, I learn the difference between the Korean market and the American market. Because the American market is led by the private side, while the local market is led by the public side. So, and we have sizable public funds in the startup area. And we see less and less funding from overseas in Korea. But as the public side continues to provide funding to startups in Korea, we have not been much impacted by this decrease. So we could actually be reminded of the importance of the public side funding. But, right, but going forward, we see that there is a less movement led by the private side and the venture capital firms. So this is the area that we have to improve going forward. And in this aspect, the investor, startup and government perspective, real improvement and innovation is required. So now, let us move on to the next question. The competency improvement is very important for the startups in Korea. So how do you see about this? And what kind of solutions would you like to give for the startups to improve their competencies? Well, in the US market, there are so many different experiments going on. And the Uber, Airbnb, and Disney, and all different companies will, are actually participating in a project where seventy people from these companies are actually pulled over to help a startup. Or the Signifier, for example, could not actually hire all different experts, but they just interviewed. And they listed all the questions that the startups would like to ask. So on that platform, they can listen to all those experiences that the experts have shared with them. And the platform actually also connects the startups to these experts. And another company makes investment in certain types of startups. And, for example, they create a fifty billion dollar of funding in the, for, as for the fire station startups. That's a very rich industry. And so they create a very specialized funding. So this type of specialized funding is very much popular in America and in other advanced companies. And the reason I'm sharing this is because each of these investor firms have very special advantages and their own strength points. So in order for your companies to support startup companies, what kind of activities do you stay in? What kind of support do you provide? And that way, if the startup is interested in certain type of improvement, then they can think of receiving funding and support from your firm.
So I believe the global investors could help startups to develop and strengthen their capabilities. However, global investors, if they are ACs, they will help a lot connecting the good mentors and providing educations and providing a variety of programs. But investors are, whether it is FIB or CVC, they are not quite good at caring the startups in terms of capability development. Because startups, they have their own direction to follow. And if they have a strong network, they could expedite the whole process from one year to one month. And sometimes, investors could also connect the startups with a more suitable investors. That could be a way of help. And there is a point, as an example. Actually, the data center generates a lot of heat. And there is a company which is helping the data centers generating heat to cool down the system. And there's listed companies like Cadiv and Hope Call Hope. They are investing into a heavy equipment. And Molex is another example. And let's say that it's like Isamta STS. And they are specialized in electronics. And this company received the investment from the VC. So whether it's Molex VC or other VC, what they do is to be a part of the board member of the company. So the investors become a part of the board members. And they actually get involved into the management of the company, which is quite rare in our country. Of course, in our country, investors sometimes become a part of the board, executive board. But it is more frequent in overseas countries. So sometimes, the investors could become an investor slash a board member. This is a way of getting involved into the management of the company. And we believe that we are also a co-founder of the company when we are making investments. First, we just have a startup to meet with one hundred mentors. So we had to set up one thousand meetings in three weeks of time. And there is a strategy and purpose for doing this. Because we help startups present their company in a very friendly manner. And they also need to think about how to present their company and how to be connected with a mentor. So we call it a mentorship-driven accelerator. So a managing director does not provide solutions. But he, rather, as a co-founder, joins the journey to find a solution together with the CEO. And while meeting one hundred mentors, we are on purpose driving the CEOs of startups having a mental breakdown. So mentors purposely ask questions, hard and challenging questions to change the mindset of the CEOs of startups. So while working as a global accelerator, we found this a success occasion. So make success, a lot of people want. So you might think that it is just so simple. But if you do understand this sentence well, and then you'll be surprised. For example, make means that we need to have a team or teams to make things happen. For example, make means that we need to have a team or teams to make things happen. And also these teams must have the commitment and technology to make things happen. So the word make means great, means a lot of things. And make something, and something is the second word. But something means that we do not have a fixed solution. So it's like a gambling if you are looking for some fixed answers. So we are helping our startups to understand what something is in this sentence, meaning that we are helping the startups to be better aligned with the market. So as I said earlier, we think that the next one is a lot of people and want. So make something a lot of people want. Meaning that we are now looking into the needs of many people, a lot of people. Sometimes we could even invent the need of people. For example, if you are a rich person and then you could just place on ads, making a lot of, putting a lot of money. So make something many people want is the slogan. So if you truly understand this sentence, then you have a great path toward a success. That's why we have this mentorship accelerated a program. And so we are helping out a startup to forge a communities and networks to have a success in the end. Thank you. So when it goes to the capabilities of startups, we believe that the capability originates from a founder of the company. And this is our point. So if you already have the team mobilized and come to us, then there's little flexibility that we can maneuver. And you just come to us saying that this is the team and this is what we're going to do. Of course, we do the due diligence and all kinds of interviews to understand the team. But our approach is different. So we believe that a startup has to start with people of high performance. And also, what is also important is whether the team mates need one another. And what is also important is that based on the current level of a capabilities, would it be possible for the company to draw a J curve of the capabilities? So we call it intellectual humility, meaning that you must question yourself whether your decision is right or not. So you need to have this kind of intellectual humility. So if you have high level of intellectual humility, then we just call it as a high level of coachability. Meaning that once the startup is founded and it goes through the exit process, then we are helping out the startups with forty advisors in Korea and six hundred advisors in overseas countries. But despite the fact that these advisors are pouring their experiences and knowledge, if the startups are not coachable, then there is no gain. So we are studying with the startups which are of high performers and also with intellectual humility and coachable ones. And also the other thing is that we need to think about the peer pressure. And we just on purpose make the startups under a great level of peer pressure. So startup companies just mingle together, having a beer time and talk to each other, et cetera. And so from our point of view, this could help one another monitor the progress they are making. So the basis here is that we just want success for everybody. So what I'm saying is that startups under the peer pressure have a high probability of success because of the peer pressure. And I have a question. And what is impressive is that in the case of Antler, you call the mentors as operators. Do you have a specific reason why you call it operator? No, no, no. We call them advisors, not operators. So the mentors are called as advisors in Antler, yes. So but I thought that you mentioned the operator was. Yes, in terms of the global platform, we have a technology solution. And who is in charge of this technology solution is called an operator. So I also like to also share my experience. So I used to run two types of education programs, which did not succeed in the end. Actually, I had a hard time defining the role of mentors and coaches. Actually, a business is run by businesspeople, not mentors and coaches. So there are so many great mentorship programs and education programs and training programs out there. But what is important is that entrepreneurs must have the ownership of their own business. But also a, yes, intellectual humility is important, as you mentioned. However, entrepreneurs must have a determination to proceed through the action that they choose. So when it goes to the coachability, I think that a strong drive is also required of entrepreneurs. And if people around you are making greater success, then you will be highly motivated. It is all the same for the kids and for adults. For example, when you were a kid, if you are surrounded by smart friends who are studying very hard, then sometimes you just look back on yourself and then you become more ambitious. And for example, there are many startups who are showing great performance. So if you are surrounded by these high-performing startups, you'll be motivated a lot. Yes. Thank you very much.
Yes, as three of these people have shared with us, I would like to resonate what they have actually shared. When we have a meeting with all the investors and then it would be good if startups can have their own, actually, strong will to push forward with what they believe in with their business. And it's very important competencies that is required to entrepreneurs. And all different startup agencies are gathered together in association with the Busan City Government to create Busan as a good environment to create the good startup ecosystem. So this is why we are all gathered here. And so I hope that what you have just shared can be delivered to the Busan City Government and those who are creating a startup ecosystem in Busan. And I would like to open the stage for the question. There's one person who would like to ask a question for today's presenters. Hello. Thank you for all the great lectures. And I am Lee Sun Yeol from Korea Investment. And ESG, social impact and going global are the three keywords that we focus on. And these are the things that is very important for the startups going global. That's what I received from your presentations. And as we support startups wanting to go to the US market and as we incubate this kind of startup, how do you think we can support them to be better appealing to the American investors in terms of the ESG? It would be good if they have come up with, if they dedicate one slide to the ESG in their pitch deck? Or is it, would it be better to have this ESG and social impact part naturally embedded in their pitch deck? So how can we better support them? Is there something wrong that I made? That's a very, very difficult question. Well, when it comes to how to express this ESG part in the pitch deck, well, startup companies really have a hard thought about it. But dedicating one slide to ESG and social impacts or combining it into the future milestone would be a good starting point. So for example, so even if we cannot dedicate to the CO2 emission directly, but with our product, we can reduce the energy consumption in the data center. And that is included in our company vision and mission. And that can be one way of expressing your social impact and ESG. So or if there is no such a part, then you can collaborate, we can incorporate that into your recruitment. So because we value ESG, then when we recruit people, we consider this ESG part in this blah blah ways. So this consideration and expressing that you are considerate about this is very important. And that's a tricky question and very clear answer has been given to that. And would there be another question? Well, there was a question posted on YouTube and yes, let me make it very quick. The question was where to start a business in Busan or in Seoul? That was the question. It really depends on your goal. And it's very hard to give an answer to your question because I cannot know what goal do you have. And when you think of your goals and networking, if Busan is better, then startup businesses in Busan. So you really need to think about what goal you would like to earn and achieve. So well, actually, VC firms can just do fundraising and just think about support the startups. And they are really into this startup business and they have a very high interest in supporting the startups. And that's why they have come all the way to this Fly Asia to share their insights. And this is the end of this session. So and in this session, we have shared the current status and the future prospects for the Asian startup ecosystem. And we have learned very valuable insights. And after this session, you will have some opportunities to share business cards with these three presenters. And as they have shared their thoughts beforehand, it was very helpful and instructive session. And it was very good and honor to have these three people all together in this session. And thank you everyone for your participation in this session. Thank you. Thank you once again, and please give a big round of applause. And it was President Chang Jae Yeo, moderator, and Mr. Song Myung Su from Penn Ventures, and Mr. Pe Jin Ho from Techstars, and Mr. Cheong Sa Eun from Antler Korea. Thank you for your insights and the lectures. We can learn the opportunities and challenges that Asian and Korean startup ecosystem poses going forward. And it was a very helpful session for those wanting to go global and other markets going forward. And so this is the end of the special session one. And in a moment, we will have a showcase from three o'clock. So please remain seated for those wanting to participate in the showcase. The startup showcase is prepared for you to, so that you can learn more about some seven startups who are in over Series A stage. And it is also a good opportunity for them to seek opportunities to go global market.